Resolution.
Yeah, Ms. Branham, if you'll come forward and introduce our guest. Tonight's resolution is about principals, and we thought it'd be appropriate if we had a student come and read the resolution for us.
Yeah.
Oh, it's cool.
This is Graham Sargent, and he's a fifth grader at Norris Elementary School.
All right. Welcome.
Whereas principals and assistant principals strive to enhance the learning and working environment for students and staff in our schools, and whereas principals and assistant principals are leaders who provide important direction and support to students and employees in our district, and whereas principals and assistant principals work diligently to enhance the working relationship between schools, parents, and community to create the best learning environments possible, and whereas principals and assistant principals have enormous responsibilities and duties to keep their schools at the highest level of success, and now, therefore, be it resolved that the Anderson County Board of Education hereby adopts the resolution of appreciation declaring February 10th, 2022, as Principal Appreciation Day in all our schools, and be it further resolved that the Board expresses deep appreciation to principals and assistant principals in our system. We encourage the students and staff to join us in expressing appreciation to the leaders of Anderson County Schools, approved by the Anderson County Board of Education in regular session on the 10th day of February 2022.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the motion that was so eloquently presented to us.
Motion seconded and approved. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Recognition of guest. One came in. Persons to be heard. Being none approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second approval of the agenda, discussion. If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Approval of the consent agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Moving second is approved of consent agenda, discussion. If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Executive approval was none this month. Comments from the Chair, the above and beyond awards.
Do you want me to start?
Yeah.
Okay. I have from Clinton High School, Stephanie White. From Central Office, I have Sheila Miracle, Amy Linert, and Jennifer Hatmaker.
From Bristle Elementary, I have Judy Bray. From Norris Elementary, Melissa Hunley. And from Fairview Elementary, Amanda Ogul.
I have from Norwood Elementary, Vicki Monsieur. And from Lake City Middle, Leslie Goodman.
From Plains River Community School, I have Kay Sammy. And preschool, I have Margaret Rogers.
I have from Clinton Middle School, Kim Phillips. And from Claxton Elementary, yay Claxton, Kaylee Lindsay.
I have from Grand Oaks Elementary, Monday Justice. From Norwood Middle, Velma Crowley. And from Dutch Valley Elementary, Louise Elliott.
I have from Anderson County High School, Barbara West. And from Andersonville Elementary, Melissa Matches.
And I have from Norris Middle, Tara Frisk. And from Lake City Elementary, Autumn Hockley.
Dr. Burl, we give out the awards to all the principals today along with our checks through our U Trust, and they will be giving those out to all our Above and Beyond Award winners. Either some of them gave them out today and tomorrow, or they may wait till next week at their PLC meeting. But we do want to thank them and our cafeteria staff for the things that they've done this year. It's been a hard year, but they have really and truly stepped up and made the best out of a bad situation because of all the supply chain problems and things like that, and they do a great job every day. So thank them. They do a great job.
The reminder that turn in your director's evaluation tonight, and this weekend, we have the Board Retreat up at the Museum of Appalachia.
Starts at four o'clock, right, Ms. Pam?
Correct.
Yes.
Four.
It's not this weekend, next weekend.
Next weekend.
Yeah, next weekend. Yeah, I'm not ready yet.
Don't show up to that.
Yeah.
Thought I was way behind.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
I'm sorry, I missed out. It starts next Friday.
Next Friday, four o'clock, yes. Four to about eight, and then we'll do Saturday morning. I think we start again at what time, Pam?
Nine.
Nine o'clock with breakfast.
Four and nine.
We do have our meal on Friday night up there.
Yes, there will be a meal on Friday night, yes.
And breakfast Monday, Saturday.
Yes. Always do a good job.
Oh, yeah.
I like it to have it here because it seems like we can all get up there, and it's a good place to have it.
Comments from the student board?
Got to do both of them tonight.
Yeah.
It has been an exciting month at Anderson County High School to start off the spring semester. I first want to thank Mr. Donovan Harrington and Ms. Kayla Watson for helping our Student Government Association throw an amazing winter formal where we had over 120 students in attendance. So we think it was a big success, and we know a lot of people had fun at it. We also want to thank Ms. Hoppy Merriman, along with our amazing school counselors who've been working tirelessly to help plan out AC students' futures for either next year or the students going off to college by helping plan out their schedules for next year and helping our seniors fill out their fast photos and apply for scholarships. ACHS has also recently announced their prom date and venue for this year. The Mavericks will be under the lights at Neyland Stadium on April 23rd, and we're really excited for this special occasion. Anderson County has definitely had some highlights as of recently with our sports, too. Connor Martin of our men's basketball team recently recorded his 1,000th point as a Maverick. We also had Lady Mavericks Kylie Alvis and Emily Mustard make the 2022 All District Team. Both our Lady Mavericks and Mavericks basketball teams both had a really good win over Gibbs High School the other day. Our AC wrestling team also hosted Clinton in their first ever in-school wrestling match and had a great win, too. Our ACHS dance and cheer teams will also be hosting clinics and tryouts coming up in the next couple of weeks, so stay tuned. We are excited and proud of the hard work that is going on at AC, and we can't wait to see what this semester holds for ACHS. Thank you.
Thank you all. Directors of board.
Just, I want to echo the sentiments of the resolution tonight. We have an amazing group of principals and administrators that work hard every day, and they just do a great job. And, you know, I was at a meeting, if you can indulge me just a minute, I was at a meeting last week with superintendents, and they were talking about leadership and what do you do for leadership and what do you do, and we were going around the room, and I said, well, evidently, Anderson County Schools does a great job with leadership. I said, because Campbell County, Union County, Rome County, Oak Ridge City, Blunt County, Alcoa, and Maryville City all have administrators that were administrators in our county. So evidently, we're doing something right. I mean, you know, from principals to assistant principals to coaches to assistant directors of schools. So I said, you know, if you'll just tell us what you want us to, you know, what kind of opening you have, we'll try to make do.
Train them.
Yeah. But the good thing about that is, we have people that are, that we're training continually to fill those positions, and they go above and beyond. So I'm excited about what our group, especially at Central Office, our directors, they work tirelessly to make sure that our leaders have chances to grow. Eric and Susie and Katrina, they really work with our principals every month, and they work with our assistant principals, and they put scenarios together and really grow them. One of the things we did this morning, we started talking about, some of the things that are hard challenges for our administrators, and we went around the room and they had a lot of, a lot of things, you know, a lot of things like tough conversations, I get too many emails, time management, how to have, how to have tough conversations with good teachers, how to have tough conversations with parents and things like that. So we're going to take all of that information back, and we're going to build our summer program to help them to, for those skills. So those are kind of some things that we've got looking ahead. The other thing, just to let you know, as of Monday, a year ago, we're up 212 students in Anderson County. So from last February the 7th to this February 7th, we've, we've up 207 students. We have, we have four schools that are, that are completely full. We have Grand Oaks Elementary School, we have Fairview Elementary School, we have Norris Middle School, and we have, yep, Claxton is full. My mind wouldn't work there for a minute. And I think what it goes to show is that you're always in your five-year plans. We know that Claxton needs a new school. We know that Norris, we did the pre-bid on Norris this last week, so we should know within a month. Hopefully, we'll break ground sometime the 1st of March on that, six more classrooms there, so that will take care of that. What you all did before I came here is Andersonville, they're at 300, but they, but they've got room for another 100 students. So that's good. We've got probably another 50 to 75 we can do at Norris Elementary School. So we've got room in that elementary school. Our middle schools, we're hurting at. Our high school, we've got room for them up there. So we're in good shape on that. Been working with Cumberland Securities. I think I've got a great plan I want to share at the Board Retreat on how we can really and truly get busy on Claxton even without a lot of help from other people, but we may try to get some help from people like TBA and UT Patel and some places like that. Last thing, believe it or not, kindergarten registration starts within about the next two or three weeks. So, you know, we're really ramping up, want to make sure we get all those things done. And like I said, our kindergarten, we're, we're over 400 kindergarten. I think we're at 413 in kindergarten, and about four years ago, if you look, we were at about 360. So we're up about 45 students in kindergarten. So I'm just excited where the district's going. Our teachers do a fantastic job. I can't be more proud of Dr. Burl, so.
Well, the Claxton School, it'll stay intact until the other one's built in, right? The way it's going to be laid out.
The way it's going to be laid out, we, we met with Michael Brady last week when we were working on Norris Middle School, and they're going to do some, some drawings and see where the school's going to sit down in there and how it's going to, how it's going to be positioned and things like that, yeah. So, and I think it's, you know, when you think about that, because me and Clay had that discussion, once we get through with the ESG project and we get through with the project up at Norris Middle School, all of our schools are in great shape. You know, we've got a plan to do roofs, we've got a plan to do, we've done a lot of upgrades this year. There's money from what we get from our regular budget, but the money we get from County Commission. We don't have that backlog of $10 million like we used to. So, so when we look at things, it's the right time to build a new school. And, and, and I think we're financially sound to do that, and I think that in the next, somebody else will be there, in the next about eight years, there's another million to a million and a half dollars drops off of our debt service. So that will free up some stuff down the road if they want to build a new middle school or a new high school or something like that, so.
Going to keep the gym that was built later on, that will stay right.
Yeah, they'll, they'll, the plan is to keep the gym, but also build another gym.
Right.
You have to be, to where everything will be under one roof. The, the design, if you look at the way elementary schools are designed today, one of the first ones that was designed the way is at Fairview Elementary School. It'll be kind of like that with the standing seam roof, all the, what you call them, all the HVAC is underneath the roof, and there's a catwalk in everything. It's kind of like CRCS, too, so that's the way they're going. So everything will be inside, and you'll have, we really wanted to see if it would be a, work with TBA to try to make it a net zero class, a whole school, so.
Where do the students, the 200-plus students come from? Are they just in homeschool?
Everywhere. Now, I will tell you this, our ELL, our students, English as a second language, it has ballooned from about 30 to almost 70 students this year. And we've got a lot coming into high school that are 16, 15, 16, and 17-year-old, and that has caused some growing pains, but we've hired some people, we're, they're looking at hiring another person, because you have to have one, they have to get so many hours of service every day, because they have to take the same test, and they have to take it in English, which is another crazy thing. But, you know, what, what, what our plan is, especially for them, we want them to graduate, but our other thing is, we want to give them trade skills to make sure when they do leave, they can go to work, because that's what they, they've come here for that opportunity, and we want to make sure that Anderson County Schools does everything we can to make sure they get that opportunity.
Are you seeing virtual students coming back to school?
We have, we only have, in middle school, we have two virtual students. In elementary, we have about six. Yep. We'll, we'll talk about the design of that, and we're going to go with that at the Board Retreat. That's part of the things I want to talk about.
About the virtual.
We didn't mention that Renee Branham, who I think she's gone now.
Yeah, she's our.
Was Principal of the Year.
Yes, she was. She was Principal of the Year, and Catherine Price was our Director of the Year. She's done a great job with nursing. On another thought, we, we have people from the State Department who are coming here tomorrow for, they're going to start at Grand Oaks, and looking the way we've done our, the way we've been dealing with mental health, the way we've been doing that stuff, they're going to talk with our family resource centers, the person with that, and then they're going to move on to CRCS to talk to her about the way we've done the grant that, that she got, what was the name of that grant? It was a nursing grant to where we could do the testing and how we've done that, we've been so successful with, so they will come and see what's going on.
Their tracking was outstanding.
Yes.
Dr. Parrott, how does that work on, I'm not as familiar maybe as I need to be, Career and Technical Center, they go there, and then you got TCAT. Does the TCAT come after that, they graduate, they go to that? Explain a little bit, because I'm not.
They can't, so, so when you, ninth graders take an introductory class, 10th graders and 11th graders will take the advanced class, either a Level 2 or a Level 3 class. That Level 3 class, as a junior, they can take dual enrollment at our school. So TCAT, they're taking it through TCAT. Our, our teachers are, are qualified to teach their program. So they're getting that, and they're getting it free. So they're, they're already clocking hours toward that. Their senior year, they can actually go to the TCAT, they've been going up to the Old Hensley Building to take welding, machining, and we also had a teacher coming down that was teaching maintenance, industrial maintenance. And now we've actually hired that person to teach our machining and industrial maintenance thing. So, so that's a big area, and, and I think having that TCAT across the road will really truly enhance more students getting there. One of the great things, when you talked about the budget, the governor has put in $500 million for CTE, and Kelly's chomping at the bit, he's already spent it 10 times. But, but what we want to look at, we want to look at expanding some of our programs so we can offer more students that. We, we just don't have enough, you know, you can only put 20 welding students in a class at a time, so if you could expand that program and put more students in there. But also, he, Kelly got, Mr. Myers got almost a million-dollar grant. It's called the Give Grant. So TCAT's going to be putting in some more programs in our school, like lineman. So we're working on a program to teach lineman to our high school. And, and the things that we still have, I can talk about CTE for forever because they do a great job. It's, they still have the EMS, our students are getting certified in EMS, they're getting certified in nurses assistance, they're getting certified in cosmetology, so all those things are still happening.
Culinary arts.
Culinary arts and things like that, so.
They've got a teacher training program.
Yes, we started a, a teacher training program this year, yes.
I think that that needs to be, Anderson County's done an extraordinary job where a lot of people got away from that, and I almost think it needs to be publicized more because, I mean, that's what we're going back to. We need these people, you know?
Best kept secret mistake.
Yeah, I want to say something, because I have to work in my job with a lot of different school systems, so I'm there at board meetings and interact, and I really think that you all as board members, I have a different perspective because I interact with problems. I get brought in when there's factions that develop on a board, and they fuss with the director, they fuss with each other. You all are an amazing group of individuals that service a cross-section of this community that have done really well. I mean, as an observer and having had a child in this system, I have been very lucky to have board members like you all that pay so much attention, that bring a diversity of experience to the table, and I cannot recall the last time that we have had a fuss over a political argument. I mean, we plan, you know, we work as, as a group, we speak with one voice, we're very active in the community, so I think you all are to be commended. I, it's refreshing.
Well, I was thinking, I know this isn't on the thing, but I was thinking the other day about our board and what a diverse group we have that have worked in different fields. I mean, we have the whole spectrum here, you know, from attorney to doctor to custodian to teacher to maintenance, you know, we've got a just well-rounded group, I think.
It's been such a pleasure to work with this board because I've been around long enough to know it's not very much fun when you, when you've got a board this.
I count my blessings.
There's no agendas, nobody comes in with an agenda.
I think, I think that that's one of the most wonderful things, that no matter what your position is in life, that you bring something to the table, but I don't care what political ram you're on, what you belong to in a political ram, we don't seem to have it, and that's what, that's what brings out the good in all of us, to the betterment of the education for the, for the students.
Yeah, that's right. But it just takes one bad apple to.
Well, I hope I'm naughty at some.
We haven't had one lately. Committee reports. Budget committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget committee met Monday night. Had a short agenda. Four appropriations. 1A is funds to, for the vacation payout balances, just to correct the wrong guess, $1,074.23. 1B is funds to replenish custodial supply budget, $175,000. 2C is, I mean, 1C is the 142, the Individual Disability Education Act carryover from 2021, $779,117.74. And 1D is a new grant for IDEA for tutoring, $34,554.40. Those have all been approved by the committee Monday and forwarded to the full board, and I move for approval.
Second.
Moving second approval of 1A through 1D. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Vale?
Aye.
Mr. Cantrell?
Yes.
Mr. Killemon?
Aye.
Ms. Landerberg?
Aye.
Mr. McCamey?
Aye.
Ms. Portwood?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Dr. Burl?
Aye.
Who's second there?
Motion carries.
Oh, I don't know, who's second? Dale? No? Who's second? Oh, it came from over there. Came here. Four transfers. 1A is to transfer a budget for the Fast Track program into regular instruction. It's a grown-up school now, $78,962. 2B is to transfer vacation payout into the correct code, that's just a cleanup of $5,224.40. 2C is to transfer funds to reconcile with state budget, that's the IDEA cleanup, $125,000. 1, 2D is to transfer funds with the school nutrition program, those are just miscellaneous transfers, $57,300. Those two were approved Monday night by the, by the committee and forwarded to the board, so I move for approval of transfers 2A through 2D.
Second.
Moving second in approval of transfers 2A through 2D. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
That is all from budget, Mr. Chairman.
Policy committee.
Policy committee also met on Monday night, and we had two policies. The first one is interference and disruption of school activities. We had a long discussion on that, and the committee made a motion to send this to the full board for approval for first reading, and I so move.
Second.
Moving second approval of policy 6.306, discussion. If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
We had one other policy, and that is the relocation of, safe relocation of students, 6.4081. And this one has been modified to work up a plan, a procedure for the safe relocation, and the committee had, also had a long discussion on this one, and made a recommendation to send to the full board for approval on first reading, and I so move.
Second.
This is on first reading?
First reading.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
Also, we, Dr. Parrott provided us with a procedure to go along with the safe relocation. That does not require board approval, but he did provide that for information.
Did the state recommend that, this policy?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, it was from the new law that they enacted.
Yeah, I mean.
That's the thing that TSBA sent us today, recommended we do something with.
Yeah, and what they sent us today was a shorter version of a procedure, and Dr. Parrott wants to use the one that we have developed.
Yeah, it kind of gives us more leeway, we could use it instead of putting it in board policy.
It was one of the new laws they passed this past session.
It, it sounded like it came from the state.
It came right at the end.
Yeah.
That's all with policy.
Motion made and carried, or do we vote?
Yeah.
Okay. That's, is that it, Joe?
That's it.
If I'm liberty to say something, if you all are going to do anything with my contract next month, you all have to vote to do it tonight, right? You have to say it's going to be on next.
That's correct. I'd like to make a motion, because we're going to discuss the director's contract at the retreat, so I'd like to make a motion that we put the first item on the agenda for next month to discuss what, if any, action we take on the director's contract, and that way it's on the agenda depending on what we decide or talk about during the retreat.
I was thinking that.
Do we need to add that to the agenda before we make a motion on it?
It would be on next month, we just have to announce before.
Yeah, but it's an action item for tonight that's not on the agenda, is my question.
Yes, yes, you are correct.
So, the first thing we need to do is add it to the agenda and then vote on it.
So I would move that we amend the agenda to include as an action item to place on the next month's agenda the consideration of the director's contract.
Second.
Moving seconded that we amend, amend the agenda to include discussion of the
Yeah, but it's an action item for tonight that's not on the agenda, is my question.
Yes, you are correct.
So, first thing we need to do is add it to the agenda and then vote on it.
So I would move that we, um, amend the agenda to include as an action item, um, to place on the next month's agenda the consideration of the director's contract.
Second.
Moving second is that we amend, amend the agenda to in- include discussion of the director's contract on the next meeting. Discussion. Not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries.
Now I'll move that, uh, and it has to be item number one on the agenda that we discuss for the March board meeting, uh, whether or not to take any action as it relates to the director's contract.
Second.
Moving second, if we place it first on the March agenda. Discussion. Not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries.
I do have one other announcement that I was supposed to make, um, during the district basketball tournament between the Clinton and Anderson County games, between one of them, Victoria Bowling is going to make a sizable donation to the special education departments at both Clinton and Anderson County High School through their Connect Academy. Um, so she's, anybody that's out there during the game, she wants to do it to both schools and thought that would be a nice time to, to make it, uh, because those kids are doing so well. So she's going to, uh, do it not as a scholarship for the students, but just to give to the faculty members to, if they need extra materials, um, participate in Special Olympics, things like that. So she's, yeah, she's going to show up at the, the game, um, and I think their, Gary Terry's going to try to pick it when Clinton plays and Anderson County play back-to-back so that in between the games, that way both schools can be recognized.
Okay, do we need to take any action on?
No, I just, that was for informational purposes, so if anybody's out there, it's just a nice gesture, uh, for her.
She's giving it to the special.
Yeah. It's to the special ed department.